Welcome to the afternoon session of the November first, two thousand and twenty-two public hearing, a public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We are currently moving through our public hearing agenda, and we will resume this afternoon with item number four. This meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So if you would like to testify on any public hearing items, you may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at the estimated time shown on our agenda, which can be found on our website. We are a little ahead of schedule, so we would be starting item number three at this time. So we're now starting item number four. So everybody should please check in with the YouTube feed to make sure that we are advancing closer to the item that you wish to speak on. And with that, I will turn it over to Corey Harala to take us through the afternoon agenda.
Thanks, Sarah. And I would also like to note for the record that we did have the last item on the agenda drop off yesterday afternoon. So item eleven, LPC twenty-three dash oh-two-seven-nine-four-one-fifty-dash-oh-five, Jamaica Avenue Rufus King House Individual Landmark has been laid over and will be presented at a future public hearing date. So to move back to public hearing item number four, that's LPC twenty-one dash zero-two-three-one-seven, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block four-seventy-four, lot six, fifty-two Green Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a warehouse building built in eighteen sixty-seven and later altered. The application is to reconstruct a portion of the facade and construct an addition.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Corey, if you could unmute yourself, I will give you control of the presentation.
Great. Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. But hang on a second. So if you could click on your screen. Perfect. You have control of the presentation. You can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Great. Good afternoon. My name is Corey Davies. I'm representing Costa Architects and the building owner at fifty-two Green Street. So as the other Corey mentioned, we have a three-story building that we are looking to reconstruct two stories on top of, and then add a penthouse addition. So on this first slide, we're just showing general tax map and a plot plan of our property and general location. The next slide here is showing the cast iron historic district map, and then a site plan zooming in on the neighborhood there. So moving on to the next slide. This is our historic tax photo from nineteen forty. So this photo is really what we're using to formulate the design to recreate the top two floors. As you can see, in nineteen forty, it was a five-story building. What happened was there was a historic fire in Soho, lost the two stories, and they were never rebuilt. So as I said earlier, we were standing with a three-story building. On the right-hand side, it's just zoomed in of our property there at fifty-two Green. So here on the next slide, we did a massing study for visibility to really show what the proposed two-story and the penthouse addition will look like from the block streets. So Broom Street to the north and Grand Street to the south. As you can see, the blue will represent the existing three-story. Purple will be the proposed. And from each angle of this massing study, the penthouse is setback enough that is not visible. So moving on to the next slide there. This is also showing a visibility study. So these photos are front view, a left view, and a side view. The red solid line is representing the proposed two-story addition, the fourth and fifth floor. The dash blue lines is the penthouse setback. So on the right-hand side is dash lines showing that, again, the penthouse setback enough won't be visible. It's approximately setback sixteen feet from the front facade. Our next slide here, we go into proposed renderings. So this is a combination of a photo that was taken on site, and then the rendering put into it for the top two floors, fourth and fifth. Similar views, the straight-on view, the left view, and the side view, just to give a little indication of what we're proposing in a rendering sense. This next slide here showing the 3D massing of the proposed building. On the left-hand side, the existing three-story is solid white, and then we hatched the proposed. In the rear yard, you'll see we have an existing ten-and-a-half-foot rear yard for the existing structure. Current zoning regulations are forcing us to set the building back an additional two feet. So at the fourth and fifth floors, the rear yard will be twelve-six instead of ten-six. And now on the right-hand side is a section study showing the line of sight. Again, that the penthouse is setback and not visible. And then you can also see the rear yard setback with a two-foot terrace that's proposed. Going on to the next is our block study, looking at the neighborhood in a whole and what other buildings have done rooftop additions and whatnot. So on the left-hand side, the green map, the hatches indicate other properties that have done the additions in the past. On the right-hand side is showing existing, our small building compared with the larger taller buildings on either side. And then on the bottom would be our proposed five-story, matching up similar heights of the right-hand side and a little shorter than the left-hand side. Here's our existing roof plans. This is what we're going to demo. This is going to become the new fourth floor. I'm running through this slide. This is the penthouse construction plan. So we have a terrace in the front because of that setback, terrace in the rear. And the penthouse is one-third the size of the story below, so it's not considered a story itself designated penthouse. Here's the bulkhead on top. So we're just showing this because we are mounting some mechanical condensers on top there, surrounding it with screening. But as you saw in the other diagrams and sections, the height and the setback will not be visible from the street. Moving on to our front facade. The left-hand side is just an existing condition photo. The middle would be our proposed demo elevation. The dash lines indicate that we're removing the windows and replacing them. And then the right-hand side is our proposed. We're really looking to mimic the historical accuracy of this building, mainly from the tax photo and then also from studying the existing second and third floors, the inset arch above the windows, the brick detailing on the sides, and then the reconstructed cornice towards the top. On the right-hand side is the neighboring building. Just so you can see proportions of power lining. And then here's the rear facade, similarly existing photo, demo, and then proposed, it's existing brick. You're continuing with a brick facade, changing out each of the windows to make them more uniform. And there is the two-foot setback at the fourth floor level. The next slide here is showing our main building section, the existing three stories. The proposed new elevator is hatched, the proposed new stairs are hatched, and also the fourth, fifth, and penthouse levels. So we're also showing that line of sight for context, obviously for the penthouse. Here, we're moving into some more blown-up details of the top of the fifth floor. So this will be the cornice that we're looking to recreate from the tax photo. We're really, again, trying to match the historic detailing, indented brickwork above the windows and the arches up near the cornice. The right-hand side would be a section of how we will construct this cornice, mainly of brick and then wrapping it with a metal cast. The next slide here is construction detailing. The same cornice details on the top left. On the bottom left is the transition from existing building to new. So that will be right at the fourth floor. As you can see, the existing construction is is brick, a solid brick wall for the exterior. And we're proposing nominal brick on the exterior with CMU as the core. And on the right-hand side would be a section through the fourth floor window, also detailing out the proposed brick arch, as I said, inset above the lintel of the window. And that brings us into front facade window sections. And we're really just trying to match what we have existing, which is a paired one-over-one with a center mullion breaking that window in the center and looking to update the performance of the window, but capture the same look, the same material, which is wood. And then the last slide here is just showing, we have a couple different window types in the front facade. Some just vary in height. But on the top right, it was a warehouse type of fixed window. And in the tax photo, didn't exist in the forties. So we are looking to replace that with something uniform for the front facade. And that ends my presentation there.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Right, I don't see any questions at this time, so let's move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And as always, we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance, and I'll turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We received a few signups before in advance, so I'll be walking through those right now. The first was Historic Districts Council. So HTC, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC appreciates this attempt at a historic reconstruction, but we are concerned that the recreated additional stories will not appear as cohesive as shown in the renderings because it won't be possible to exactly match the brick or the mortar joints. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lucy. So it doesn't appear as though any other hands are raised. So I will state for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval of this project.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Davies, would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Yeah, all I'd like to say is we are looking into the brick type. We are looking to match historically the color, and we're going to work with the company to get custom brick created to get as close as possible, especially in that front facade. So still in process, and we will definitely look into the mortar as well to really study that and make sure we can capture the same look. Recreation is really our goal.
Okay, great. And of course, all samples will be subject to review and approval by the staff. So you'll be working closely with our staff on that as well.
Absolutely.
All right, Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, I don't see any final questions, so I'm sending you all a request to unmute so we can begin our discussion. All right, and Commissioner Luffey, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And as has been presented, this is a building that suffered a fire. There are, and we have seen a number of buildings in Soho that in the earlier in their lives had been reduced to two or three stories due to fire. And we've approved reconstructing the missing floors in a variety of ways, including recreation as well as sort of modern interpretation. The proposal before us today is a recreation based on the details and materials at the lower floors and also looking at the details in the tax photo. And it includes a setback penthouse, not visible from the public way, with mechanical permits on top of that. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Sure, sure. This is almost ninety-five percent or ninety percent creation. And it's done well, and I can accept it. My only issue is the fireplace, is the fire escape. You know, we'd imagine that they would try to remove that. But with that, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Gustafson?
I think in almost every way, this is appropriate, as is. I mean, when you look at, you know, essentially, it's putting back what was there before. It's sandwiched between two buildings. So there's no impact on the streetscape, except perhaps to actually complete it in a way it used to be completed. I don't really have a problem with the fire escape ladder. And I think the issue that was raised in testimony is going to be the one big one, which is that, you know, it's one thing to plan to match what was there before. It's another thing to execute on it. And if they're going to try to match, they're going to have to work very, very closely with our staff to get it as close as they can. So I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm in agreement with all of that. Think it's appropriate and that they should work closely with staff.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, when I first saw this, I thought, well, what's not to like? You know, it's great to see the restoration. And I agree with other Commissioners' comments, obviously, but I can support it as presented. It's a very nice proposal.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed. It's appropriate as presented. I think that the applicant might want to work with staff, especially on having the building properly cleaned so that you can assess really what the color of the brick is and make sure that they specify a tinted mortar. And just staff should just check the joint heights and things like that.
Yeah. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yes, Michael stole my recommendation. Make sure you get the lower part of the building clean before you try and match the brick. But wonderfully appropriate project.
Great. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with all the comments. And Commissioner Devonshire is up, and Michael is also up, so incorrect. It will be, even after cleaning it, it will be hard to match, but let's give it a try.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
That's right. Not always so easy to replicate, but it's possible. And staff and architect working together will make it happen.
Great. And Commissioner Luffey?
I agree with all of my fellow Commissioners. They've pretty much stated everything.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson, oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Trying to sneak in there. I remember, there is a product that tints brick, like a stain or something that I've seen advertised and I heard used on projects, not by myself, that can help adjust these things.
No.
Yeah, that's great.
Don't do it?
I've heard that too. Don't do it.
Don't do it. All right. Well, there you go then.
Last option.
Last option, but we have actually looked at and used that as an option in the case of like a legalization of a brick that isn't quite right. And so it is a resource, but we want to hopefully get it right in the original sample. And the staff will do that as always. They review all of the details on the joints and the mortar and the brick. All right, and Commissioner Jefferson? I know you had some concerns about the fire escape, but given that it's Soho and fire escapes were historically here, are you comfortable making a motion to approve it as is?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thanks.
In a matter of LPC dash twenty-one, zero-two-three-one-seven, fifty-two Green Street, a warehouse building built in eighteen sixty-seven. Application is to reconstruct a portion of the facade and construct an addition. I note that the building scale, style, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. DAF also note that the top two floors were destroyed in a fire prior to the designation of the historic district. I recommend approval finding that the work will not damage any significant architectural features or compromise any significant changes that have occurred at the building over time, that the proposed reconstruction, that the proposed reconstructed fourth and fifth stories will be rebuilt to match the historic material, design, dimension, details, and placement. And the carpet will be restored to its nineteen forties condition as documented by historic tax photograph. That the extension of the fire escape ladder to the roof will provide a necessary safety egress and place it in front of the corners we've been keeping with the location of ladders to roof found at some fire escape within the historic district. That the proposed wood windows will match historic wood windows in terms of material, configuration, operation, and finish. That the proposed six-floor penthouse, setback from the front rear facade and featuring standing seam metal cladding and a multi-light windows and doors assembly would be typical of rooftop accretions found in the historic district and will not be visible from the public thoroughfare. That the proposed brick rear facade will feature a solid-to-void ratio, floor-to-floor level, and material palette that relates well and the secondary facade of the neighboring buildings. And that the proposed work will restore the original height of the building to the streetscape with facade details as they existed in nineteen forty.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
You have to take the roll.
Oh, sorry.
Take the roll.
Taking the roll, sorry.
All right, Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luffey?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number five, LPC twenty-two dash one-zero-two-nine-two, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block two-oh-nine, lot thirty-five, two-seventy-five Canal Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. This is a Queen Anne's Style store building built in eighteen seventy-eight. The application is to install illuminated signage.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Jackie, you now have control of the presentation. If you just click on your screen, please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Hello again, Commissioners and Landmark staff. Thank you for hearing this application for signage today. I'm Jackie Puduvallan, Preservation Consultant on the project. This is two-seventy-five Canal Street. A proposal to install signage with three different types of illumination. And I'm here today with the owners of the franchise, Mr. Nadeem Kirmani and Mr. Talak Kirmani. And actually, Mr. Nadeem Kirmani would like to briefly address the Commissioners before I start the presentation. Mr. Kirmani? Mr. Kirmani, are you there? Okay, maybe we'll...
Jackie, I'm sorry, Nadeem was not on our list. So I will, I'll promote them now, but you're going to have to take over the presentation again.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I did provide their names. Thank you for that.
Okay, so if you will just click on your screen one more time, you'll have control of the presentation. Thank you. And Nadeem, if you will unmute yourself, you can state your name for the record.
This is Nadeem Kirmani.
Hello, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi. My name is Nadeem Kirmani. I'm an immigrant from Pakistan. I moved over here in nineteen eighty-three. And just for the record, I visit so many places. New York is the home to be. And I've been in the business since nineteen ninety-five, worked my way up from once a single unit to multiple units. And in the last couple years, we've been trying to bring more business into New York City because obviously I like to promote my own city where I live. We opened in last two years, four to five stores in five boroughs, which include Queens, Brooklyn, Bronx, and New York City. We opened in one store in one-twenty-fifth Street just a couple months ago. We opened one store in one-hundred-and-eighty-one Street and Canal Street. As I just want to emphasize, first of all, thank you, everybody, for listening to me. We open all the stores, plus-minus, this just go on. But Canal Street is becoming to be a problem because if you look at on the left side of my building, it's a big awning which covered everything we have. And I invest almost one-point-two to one-point-three million dollars. And our sales are in a way that if we don't get appearance for our signage, we maybe have to shut down within one month or two months or whatever maximum I could afford to lose money. And all I'm looking for, I was not aware of, it's a landmark thing. On my right side, all the buildings have big flags and everything. On the left side is the same thing. My building is in landmark. I really urge you guys to look at my building. Look at the, you know, appearance we have. Nobody can see it. Even if you're walking through the street, you will not know until you're in front of the store and you're looking for KFC. I really need some kind of help so I could do this signage as soon as possible to determine whether we could stay in business and not. I would really appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kirmani. Okay, so to resume, I just wanted to first let you know that two-seventy-five Canal Street is located on the north side of the street between Lafayette and Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. Here are some existing condition photographs, looking east and west on Canal. As Mr. Kirmani was saying, you'll note that there is currently, actually, there's currently this very large awning which does block the view of his storefront coming from that direction. You also note there's currently an internally illuminated KFC sign inside the store, which is set eighteen inches behind the glass, and it will be removed once the sign is approved for the exterior. Here's a streetscape photo to show you the storefront's context. The adjacent building to the west was a theater built in the nineteen, early twentieth century. And that large projecting metal awning is its former marquee. Here's a photo taken from the corner of Broadway looking east. You can see from this vantage point how the former marquee locks the view where there would be signage for two-seventy-five Canal past here. And I'm highlighting this again, as Mr. Kirmani alluded to, because of the fact that it's relevant to the signage proposal today. Here's a photo of the streetscape looking across the street on Canal. And here's the nineteen forties tax photo, which shows an enormous flat panel sign, two-seventy-five Canal Street. And you can also see the marquee of the former theater next door. I think that cut rate had the same concern in the nineteen forties, that people could not see their sign past the marquee. Here are some photos showing how the storefront has changed in recent decades. On the left is nineteen eighties tax photo. Note, there is still a large flat panel sign there. Likewise, in the center photo, which is from two thousand nine. And on the left is the storefront in two thousand fourteen. You'll note there really is no storefront at this point. There's no material there. It's just really open. In two thousand and eighteen, the building received a CVA for reconstructing a storefront. So everything you see today is new material, except for a couple of cast iron columns. And here's the proposed signage, a metal panel with halo-lit letters and halo-lit, partially internally illuminated signage above the storefront glass. So it's a combination, really. And an internally illuminated blade sign to the right of the storefront. And here's that blade sign, which incidentally would not be installed on a cast iron column. There's no column at this side of the storefront. That's modern material. Here's a section drawn that shows where the sign would be attached, at the fascia above the storefront windows. The overall sign size is ten foot, four inches long and forty-six inches high. Here's a detail for the KFC letters, which will be halo-lit aluminum letters that are five foot, five inches long and twenty inches high. And here is the iconic bucket, which would be forty-two and a quarter inches long and forty-two inches high. It would be a push-through, which is a new term I've just learned from signage industry. Basically, it couldn't, it's going to be halo-lit at its perimeter, but because it's a solid shape, at night... the, at night, the halo lit, the halo lighting wouldn't do anything for it. You would just see a solid sort of rectangular shape. So for that reason, they're proposing for this to be halo lit and also somewhat internally illuminated. Because it's going to be, the material would be white translucent polycarbonate with the image of the face sitting in front of or projecting from the bucket and outlined in black, as you sort of see in this this example photo in bottom left corner. Lastly, the flat acrylic letters at the bottom, which would not be illuminated, those would be five foot, about five foot, four inches long and about four and three quarter inches high. And here's the blade sign, which is intended to provide more visibility for the restaurant in spite of that that awning next door. It would be thirty-two inches high and extend eighteen inches over the sidewall with letters at the bottom that are thirteen inches long. And that would be an acrylic face, internally illuminated acrylic face on both sides. And just to give you some context for the area, I just wanted to show you some nearby relevant signage. This Bank of America, two seventy-seven Canal. So that's at the corner of Broadway within the former theater building next door. This illuminated sign was there at designation. This UFC gym, which is further down within the same theater building facing Canal Street. I couldn't find out if this is permitted or not, but that's another illuminated signage with very large letters right next door. This this fun building with the classic sign at three forty-five Canal, those signs were there at designation. And also to provide district context elsewhere in Soho Cast Iron, you have the Crate and Barrel at the corner of Broadway, six eleven Broadway, cable building, five twenty Broadway, the Michael Kors, internally illuminated letters at four forty-one Broadway and the TJ Maxx at four eighty-three Broadway with large letters in the fascia. And just to give you some historic context for how signage, you know, has looked in this district, going back to the nineteen, this nineteen thirty-seven photo, this is a view looking south on Broadway from Houston Street. You'll notice utilization of very large sign bands and very large, even possibly partially illuminated projecting sign here where I'm highlighting. I think that, I think this has little light bulbs in it, but I'm not sure. And looking on Canal Street, some other historic photos, this is the nineteen forties photo showing that theater building at Broadway and Canal. You'll see all the large signs that were present on that on that theater building at that time. And this is on the right, the north side of Canal near Lafayette, these very large signs featured on on a building nearby our our subject property. And that is, that is the presentation. We think that for the location, the sign is contextual, given the accretions of different sizes of signs and types of signs, including internally illuminated signs that you find along Canal Street, which is a busy commercial district, which has, gives it a different character from other parts of this district. And we don't think the sign will overwhelm the the scale of the storefront itself. And I look, I look forward to your questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions. I just had one quick question. On this drawing, there's something that says two inches, but it's not pointing to the blade sign. It's pointing to the space next to it. Is that just how many inches it is off of the storefront framing, or is that meant to be the thickness of the blade sign?
Off of the storefront framing, I believe. Excuse me.
Great. And on the panel sign, just so I understand the sort of dual illumination approach, the the panel itself is black metal. And then the logo, the bucket with the face would be internally illuminated. And then the KFC letters are backlit. Is that?
The. Okay, about to have my own problems with my throat. So the KFC letters will be red painted aluminum with the halo lighting around them. The bucket will be a translucent material. Let me get back to that. Sign. So this is the example I was provided with. So it would be this polycarbonate material so that there would be halo lighting at its perimeter, but it would really be like an acrylic so that light is shining through it as well. And that way, the the sign would be able to be read at night, because if it was just halo lit, it would look like a box.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, if commissioners, if there are no other questions, we'll move to public testimony. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to take us through the testimony.
Okay, thank you, Chair Carroll. We received a few signups in advance, so I'll be moving through those first. The first is Richard Moses. So, Richard, I will be promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Richard Moses from the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, also known as LESBI. LESBI has not opposed the application to install aluminum signage at two seventy-five Canal Street. The property is located within the traditional boundaries of Manhattan's Lower East Side. We believe that signage in the Lower East Side has historically been of various, often visually assertive designs and has been shaped by the many different immigrant groups with their own aesthetic traditions who have opened shops here over the last two centuries. Therefore, although we would ideally prefer that the application follow the commission's rules for signage, particularly concerning the prohibition against internally illuminated signs, as long as the proposed signage does not result in damage to significant architectural features and conforms to zoning and other regulatory requirements, we do not object here. We do want to raise a concern that the installation of blocking to support the signage be done in such a way as to not damage any significant facade architectural features. Based on the presentation materials, it's not clear to us how this installation will be carried out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Richard. The next up will be Lucy Levine from the Historics District Council. So Lucy, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HDC finds the proposed signage inappropriate. It should not interfere with the horizontal line of the storefront cornice. We believe that the signage should fit within the horizontal zone defined by the storefront's transom and that it should not be backlit. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lucy. Okay, and the next up will be Mark Bench from VSNY. So, Mark, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Chair Carroll, commissioners. This is Mark Bench for the Victorian Society in New York. Anyone who's traveled abroad knows that American fast food restaurants are perfectly capable of conforming to local design ordinances and of making a positive architectural, if not culinary, contribution. This one should conform to the rules for science and should relate harmoniously in scale and design to the building's architectural details and the character of the historic district as a whole, not Canal Street, which the commission has been trying to tame for many years. The worst of the over scaled twentieth century signs on Canal should not be the models. This application should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And I believe that is all we have for speakers who raised their hands. So I will just note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two also recommends denial of the facade sign and that the applicant return for a public hearing before the community board with the design that respects the character of the historic district and landmark district. Also denial of the unusually large blade sign unless commission staff verifies that the sign and its positioning conform to the regulations for the blade signs of the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jackie, would you like to respond to the comments?
No, you're muted.
Thank you. So first off, in response to Community Board Two, we actually did change the sign considerably in response to their comments. So the sign you're seeing here is not the Community Board Two saw. It projects a lot, a lot less farther from the facade. It's a lot more shallow and flat compared to what they saw. And that sign was entirely internally illuminated. So in response to their comments and working with the staff, we came up with this compromise, this solution for a combination of halo lit and internally illuminated. Really, where just necessary at the bucket so that it could be discerned as a as a feature with a, you know, with an icon on it at night. Regarding, let's say, comments about the the oversized scale of this sign, as I showed in, you know, the historic context photos, there really have always been very large signs throughout Soho Cast Iron Historic District and particularly on Canal Street. There's just now a change in technology in that people want lighting on those signs as well. So let's see, other comments. I think that's it. That's all I wanted to respond to. Thank you. Sarah, I can't hear you.
Okay, thank you. There was a comment about the sign spanning the, over the sort of tablature above the storefront and the transom. And I'm just wondering if you shifted it down to the transom bar, would you then sort of be within the opening and not spanning the top of the open?
Um, it would still be a little taller than that transom. And actually, the reason why they placed it there was because they didn't, they thought the commission would want less interference placed over the storefront glass. So they were trying to keep it farther above the storefront glass for the commission. But I think they would entertain lowering down. I also would want to remind everyone, I just remember now, there was a comment about not damaging architectural features by installing this. Obviously, they would take care with that, but I also wanted to remind everyone that nothing here is original to this building, except for those cast iron columns, which are framing the residential entrance on the left. So there's nothing here that's precious that would be damaged by installing this sign.
Okay. And there was a comment about the size of the blade sign. I think the size actually would conforms with the size criteria for a staff level bracket sign. It's really the illumination that is
Right.
the reason it's before us today.
Right.
The internal illumination as opposed to an external source. And I don't know, did you explore any external sources of lighting for that blade sign?
Um, we didn't, we didn't really, because we didn't get much in the way of staff comments back about the blade sign. So we didn't feel the need to, but I can tell you right now that they would be very happy to get an approval for modifications today for an external light source on a, you know, on opaque sign if necessary.
Okay.
I mean, a solid sign.
Okay. All right. And similarly, I wonder if the halo lighting causes a sort of silhouette effect, right?
Yes, exactly.
Make that logo look like a box.
Yes.
Would a concealed cove light above a flat metal logo be some, and that washed down on it? Do you think that would be enough lighting to make it legible?
Yeah, I'm sure if commissioners preferred that, I'm sure they could make that work as well.
Okay. All right. Okay, thanks. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, I'm going to send you all a request to unmute. All right, Commissioner Lutti, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Agreed.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so this is an application for signage on this commission-approved nonhistoric storefront, including a blade sign and a sign above the transom that spans over the storefront and frame and and the blade sign is internally illuminated, and that's the reason that the application is, that portion of the application is before us. The other sign is before us, both for its placement size and the internal illumination of the logo. I believe that the actual halo type lighting is approvable at staff level, but it's the internal illumination with the polycarbonate face that triggers the review in addition to size and placement. So we'll begin our discussion. And that's why I asked some of those questions about options. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Uh, yeah, sure. I think that.
Oh, and sorry, Diana, let me just interrupt permanently. I did neglect to mention that Commissioner Chen is recused on this item and has not been present for the meeting. Sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, Diana.
No problem. Thank you. I think that, given the situation with historical signage on Canal Street and in the neighborhood, I think that a large sign is perfectly appropriate. I think that the sign needs to be placed differently. I would just lower it a bit so it doesn't interfere with the above tablature, but they could, they could work with the staff. And just so it's, it, right now, it seems awkward in its placement, but I don't have a problem with the size. I also, okay, with the blade sign being illuminated in some fashion, and I think that could be done a variety of ways. As far as actually having the main sign internally illuminated, I'd be okay with that too, if they work with the staff on an appropriate way to do it. But I, you know, interested to hear what other commissioners say. In general, I'm a, I think the size of the sign is fine. The placement needs to be adjusted. And both signs can be, should, I think, can be illuminated. And, you know, kind of leave it up to the staff and the other commissioners as to the best way of doing that illumination. Because I think there are a lot of examples of different forms of illumination in the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. I agree with Diana. I think that lowering it would be better down to the transom bar, more or less, maybe squished that it fits under the frieze. However, I do note that if the whole reason for this is to fight the marquee, whether you leave it here or lower, it's kind of still going to be blocked by the marquee when you're coming from the other side. I mean, another suggestion is is to do pin mounted letters, you know, and use the transom, you know, use pin mounted letters in the frieze for the text and put the, put the bucket in the window. But just something that just works a little bit better with the architecture. And I think this can be done with staff. And I think that the marquee, the blades end is fine.
Okay, so you're fine with the illumination if the sort of placement related better to the storefront?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I agree with Michael's idea completely. I was, I was looking at that and comparing it to the awning next door, and it would still be blocked if it was up higher. So I think a reconfiguration with consultation with the staff is the way to do it, and the illumination I'm fine with.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I think the two Michaels have have come up with an interesting idea of slight change and the illumination, the internal illumination on the blade is okay with me.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Lutti?
Me as well. I agree with what the two Michaels have said.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow commissioners and their suggestions.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Boy, isn't it an odd thing to be objecting to signage on Canal Street? I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think that there is, there are some bounds that can be pushed here in light of where it's located.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Um, it is too bad. The existing sign on the window is actually cool and everything about is cool, but I think, I think that the real problem is that the existing sign on the window, it's not really a competition with the marquee, but that it doesn't have the bucket. And it's a problem that is not to my graphic sense, because I think it looks really cool the way it is right now, but for, you know, brand recognition, and that's the real problem. Anyway, I agree. Anyway, I agree with what's been said. If in fact it is the marquee, then locating it somewhat differently with the help of staff and lower towards the transom is fine. I don't know that it'll achieve the result that they want, but it is fine. And I agree about the and the blade sign is appropriate. Both are.
Okay. All right, great. So I think we can support this with the recommendation that they continue to work with the staff on the reconfiguration of the placement. So let me go ahead and, and make this motion, just so I can add that in. Docket number, in the matter of docket number twenty-two dash one zero two nine two two seventy-five Canal Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. The Queen Anne Style Store and Loft built, that's Queen Anne, Queen Anne Style Store Building built in eighteen seventy-eight. This is an application to install illuminated signage. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that there is historic precedent for large sign, signage panels at this building on Canal and on Canal Street, a highly commercial thoroughfare, and therefore the presence of both a bracket sign and a large illuminated sign will not detract from the streetscape views. That the signs will be installed through a modern storefront infill and a plain masonry pier and will not damage significant architectural features, that the installations will not include exposed conduit or junction boxes and that cumulative amount of signage will not overwhelm the building or the streetscape. However, I recommend that the applicant continue to work with the staff to reconsider the placement of the signs within the opening. Okay, Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, and Mark, will you call the vote?
Jared Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Latfee?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you. All right.
Very much, everybody. Next item is public hearing item number six, LPC twenty-three dash zero two three nine eight. An application for certificate of appropriateness number of Manhattan Block five seventy-four, Lot fifty-seven, twenty-five West Tenth Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. It's a Greek Revival style row house built in eighteen forty-six to forty-seven. And the application is to alter the front and rear facades, install win, windows and doors, construct a rear yard addition and excavate the rear yard.
Okay, commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Eric, you now have control of the presentation. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Sure. My name is Eric Sheffield. I'm the architect on the project along with, with Easton Suthman from my office. Easton's here with me. Valerie Campbell is our land use consultant on this project that we've been enjoying working with on several projects. And Silman Associates is the structural engineer we're working with on this project and had the pleasure of working with them before. They're very familiar with these old townhouses in the West Village. And so it's been a pleasure working with them on this project also. Our project is located at twenty-five West Tenth Street, which is between Fifth and Sixth Avenues on this beautiful tree-lined street. Let's see here, we are of course in the Greenwich Village Historic District. As you can see here, our building is a four-story plus basement in a row of four-story plus basement townhouses. We have a two-story plus basement extension on the back of the building existing, which is in line with the neighbor at twenty-three's two-story plus basement extension. And the neighbor at twenty-seven has again a two-story plus basement extension that is slightly deeper into the lot than ours. Whoops, jumped ahead here. This is the nineteen forties tax photo of the townhouse. You can see in this nineteen forties tax photo that the stoop has been removed prior to this photo. We are one of four sister buildings. This is twenty-five West Tenth Street right here, along with twenty-seven, twenty-nine and thirty-one West Tenth Street. And we have twenty-three West Tenth Street here that is a separate building that is slightly taller than ours. You can see this photo from the landmark designation heard from nineteen sixty-nine that all of the stoops are removed from these townhouses that are sister buildings. And you can see our very small, kind of awkward, top floor windows here. And then you can see the altered stepped cornice of twenty-seven's townhouse with the double doors here in the middle. It's a little unusual. Twenty-nine had its windows extended to full height and then had its cornice reinstalled, it looks like, as its cornice matches our cornice. And then thirty-one not only raised the fourth floor windows to full height to match twenty-nine, but also added a fifth floor at some point and a cornice on top of that. This is our building in the middle of winter where you can see almost the entire facade. And obviously, once the trees come in, it becomes a lot harder. The stoop that's shown here was installed in the nineteen nineties, early nineties with approval from Landmark Commission. There's no evidence that there was any historical photos or drawings used in the restoration of this surround or the door. And they seem a little bit off when you actually see them in person. The first thing we did, of course, when we started this project was did as much research as we could to find any historical documents. We looked in many, many different sources. And then we talked to the Office for Metropolitan History, which is always a great resource. And they were to find this eighteen ninety-eight facade renovation drawing that was approved by the Department of Buildings. I believe down here is the number from the alteration that was done by Hoppin and Cohen Architects. Beautiful drawing with a lot of detail. So we were very excited to find this drawing. As you can see, starting here, you can see this beautiful detailed wrought iron railing that was originally here from this renovation, along with the wrought iron null post and handrail leading up to this much more ornate surround with all of its beautiful detail captured in this drawing. Along with this new, this entrance door with its wood detailing, leaded stained glass window and stained glass transom and stained glass transom over the parlor level windows. Whoops, I jumped too far. Let me go back. Whoop. Uh-oh. There we go. Okay, so this is the existing facade of twenty-five West Tenth Street. And starting at the bottom here, I'll work my way up, talking about all the proposed items on our townhouse. We first started by proposing to reinstall this wrought iron railing to match the drawing from Hoppin and Cohen from eighteen ninety-eight, along with the cast iron null posts and railing. And then restoring this beautiful surround with all of its detail, matching that Hoppin and Cohen eighteen ninety-eight drawing. Along with the new entrance door with the leaded stained glass panel in the middle of it. And a new leaded stained glass panel over the transom and the transoms of the parlor level windows. All of the windows will be fully replaced with new wood windows matched to the existing detail. And then on the top floor here, where we have this very awkward half windows that create this very awkward space inside, we're proposing to raise this facade three feet two, which is that number there you can't see. The cornice itself would be removed, repaired and reinstalled at this new height. The railing you see here is pushed back, so you don't actually see this from the street. And you can't see, this is the new stair bulkhead that's not visible from the street, along with the new elevator bulkhead that's not visible from the street. Were required to, by building code, to bring the chimney flues of our neighbors that are set back from the street up to three feet above, anything within ten feet. And so these chimneys flues are slightly visible from the street at a, at a very particular angle. You can see them. Next, going back to this detail of the new surround and railings, and we blew up this detail from the Hoppin and Cohen drawing, just to show you how we're mimicking their detailing here to bring back this character to this entrance. This is a blow up of the stained glass in the middle of this entrance door. And you can see this elongated diamond shape here and then the smaller diamonds here that we use to create the proposed leaded stained glass in that entrance door. Whoops. And again, this was the drawing by Hoppin and Cohen from eighteen ninety-eight that shows that there was leaded stained glass in the transoms of the parlor level windows. Again, we look to the entrance doors, little beautiful detail of this leaded stained glass with the diamond shapes and the elongated diamonds to inspire this stained glass above these transom windows. And this is very consistent with the neighborhood. We took a bunch of photos of neighboring townhouses. This is at five East Tenth Street. And you can see all the detail in that leaded stained glass. This is directly across the street at thirty West Tenth Street. They've actually unfortunately have glass in front of, a big sheet of glass in front of the stained glass, so you don't get that beautiful dappling effect of the leaded stained glass. And this is fifty-eight West Tenth Street where you really get to see that dappling effect that is so, brings the surface alive as you walk by. Next is our sister building. This is twenty-nine West Tenth Street, which was a sister building or is a sister building. You can see their transoms were also have this leaded stained glass with a simple diamond shape. And this again was the original stoop location that was removed and for whatever reason, they didn't match the windows of the parlor level and instead just put in a double hung. This is just a reference image to give you a sense of the light stain color of the glass in this diamond shape, to the elongated diamond shape. And this is a rendering to give you the full effect of this restored surround, door, stained glass and stained glass transoms. These are the nineteen forty tax photos to again show you the sister buildings. You've got twenty-five West Tenth Street, twenty-seven West Tenth Street with its stepped crown, cornice, I'm sorry. Twenty-nine West Tenth Street, which has the windows full height and had that cornice reinstalled, which is very similar to what we're proposing. And of course, thirty-one, which added, not only did they raise this floor, then they also added this fifth floor and cornice. And again, twenty-three, which is a good bit higher than ours. Let's go to the next one. This again was taken, photograph taken early spring before any of the leaves came in, which is one of the, you know, times you can actually see these facades and see these cornices. Next is a drawing showing twenty-five West Tenth here, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one and twenty-three. That's the existing condition and this is the proposed condition. So again, we're lining up our cornice with twenty-nine. Twenty-nine becomes our guide here. And you see the full height windows on either side here. And again, with the new stoop and railings down here. And this is just again showing that red line in a close-up detail. Again, the, these aren't visibly stair bulkhead, elevator bulkhead and railing are not visible from the street. This is that awkward experience that I was telling you about inside the building. When you're in this top floor, it becomes almost a hospital lookout. It's an incredibly awkward feeling. It's hard to express in a photograph that we'd like to change. This is the existing cornice, which would be removed, repaired and reinstalled at that new level. And this is a section through the top of the building that shows the pitched roof right now and the existing situation we have with this very awkward ceiling height, which is also shared in the back. The proposed raising of this facade by three feet two inches and flattening out the existing roof. The back is the same issue that we would raise this and hopefully take care of this awkward condition back here too. This is a photograph of the roof with the mockup in place. You can see right here is the railing, which is setback barred up. You won't see this from the street. Behind it here, you can see the cornice that was put in there for the mockup. And this is the elevator bulkhead and the stair bulkhead, which are again not visible from the street. And this is the view from the street, which is typical. Once the leaves come in, we actually highlighted in blue here so you could get a sense of where this work is. But it's extraordinarily hard to see once these trees come in in early spring and through the late fall. So we, we highlighted in blue. Here's the proposed area. And again, over here, it's, it's pretty hard to see, but it highlighted in blue here through the trees. Again, these are more roof shots showing the stair bulkhead, elevator bulkhead, and this is the rear railing. And then this is looking up from our rear yard at the rear elevated roof line. And this is the rear of the house that's gone through a lot of different layouts of windows. You can see a lot of different remnants of what had taken place here. To start with, this porch is being removed completely. The existing rear wall will stay right where it is here. There's no expanding of this existing basement first floor or second floor. You can see here that there was an opening about this size that of course wasn't original. And then they put in this new opening here that's not original. And then here, again, there is an original opening to this height and then a trunk to this height. And a lot of rearranging going on on these floors. On the upper two floors, this is the fourth, third floor and fourth floor. Again, you can see a lot of rearranging happened. I guess let's start with the cornice. The cornice is actually made out of plywood and two-by-fours, literally modern day plywood and two-by-fours. I think somebody tried to recreate something here. But it's in very bad shape. And then here you can see the original window sill, I think is here. There's one here, one in the middle and the third over here, creating those three openings, matching the ones below. We intend to restore those three openings. Let's see, we're going to go to the next picture, which shows these are our sister buildings here. So this is twenty-seven West Tenth Street and obviously it's rearranged its window openings completely. This is twenty-nine, which is similar to what we're proposing here of restoring the three windows at the back of the building at the top floor. And they of course have raised these windows to full height windows and reinstalled some sort of cornice on the top here. This is twenty-three West Tenth Street, which is not one of the sister buildings. This is looking down from the roof. This is the, or actually this is the terrace we're looking down from. This is the porch that's going to be removed. The rear yard is completely concreted over at the moment. And so it is not in great shape. Okay, so this is looking at the rear facade of twenty-five West Tenth Street here, and you get a sense of how much manipulation has happened over the years. Along with twenty-seven, our sister building, twenty-nine, our sister building, and then thirty-one that had the extra floor added on top. And this is the proposed. Again, none of this is visible from any street, public street. We have the basement level and first floor, which has a double height glass space. And then we have the second floor, which again has this more glass on this level. The brick facade would be removed and reinstalled using the original brick for this whole area. And then the next floor is up. Again, we would save all the brick that we would remove and reinstall it to re to put back the three window layout that is original to these old townhouses, similar to twenty-nine that's right here. We've raised that roof slightly. We are still lower than twenty-three and whoops. Yeah, we've raised the roof slightly, so we're lower than twenty, twenty-three and on par with our sister buildings of twenty-seven and twenty-nine. And here's just a close-up before and after. And here's a section through the building. We've already talked about the roof work and the front facade work and the rear facade work. The other concern that we were hoping to, that we're proposing to change is right now we have a seven foot ten basement level ceiling height and a six foot zero ceiling height in the cellar level. What we're proposing to do is to lower the basement floor to allow for a nine foot ceiling height in this basement level. And then lower the cellar level to create a nine foot ceiling height in the cellar level. And then extend our cellar out underneath the backyard, staying five feet away from the rear lot line. That's what this number here is. And allowing us to put in a wellness pool for our client. And this is a close-up of the existing condition up here, which is the seven foot ten basement level and the six foot zero cellar level. As opposed to the proposed nine foot basement level, this is the original floor of the basement level, which would be pushed down. And then a nine foot cellar level to be extended out under the backyard. And then a nine foot cellar level uh, to be extended out un- uh, under the backyard, remaining five feet from that lot line and to create this wellness pool below. Uh, this is the cellar floor plan. So you have the existing cellar floor plan. This is a little hallway that leads under that current rear extension. Yeah, to a little bit of a sidewalk hatch or a rear yard hatch, will you, if you will. Um, and this is the proposed cellar with the extended uh, cellar level out under that backyard. Uh, these are photos of the interior. This townhouse was renovated in the nineteen nineties. Uh, the entire interior was renovated uh, in that period and looks that way. Uh, this is the first floor. Again, the rear facade stays right where it was. Um, second floor, third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor, roof. And that brings us all the way to these renderings of the front facade. Rear facade, I, I forgot to mention that, uh, the brick would be restored on this rear facade, uh, fourth, uh, third and fourth floors, fourth and fifth floors, third and fourth floors, I'm sorry. Um, and would be painted white, uh, just to be consistent up here, uh, since some of the bricks are painted up there. Thank you for allowing me to present. Uh, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we do have some questions. Commissioner Shamir Baron, please go ahead.
Thanks. I may have missed it, but are there any drawings or photographs that show us the condition of these sister buildings as it were from when they were actually the same or um, originally developed?
Uh, we don't have any of those photographs. Um, in the designation report, I think they go into extensive descriptions of how they were all originally sister buildings identical in look. Um, each one describes how they were altered. Um, so it, it seems like at least, um, you know, the landmark staff who've done that work really looked thoroughly at that, that they were sister buildings and were identical originally.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, uh, I wondered if you, instead of uh, raising the front, if you had considered uh, strategy that's often used in the village of, you know, a studio window or a uh, artist, an artist studio or skylight at the, at the front, you could stay up still, raise the roof without having to uh, alter the, the height of the front facade.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very awkward space to be in with those windows so low. Um, and to the degree I love the studio of windows and they let in so much tremendous light, um, this was really a matter of if you're in that room and you, you, you can't help but look out a window when you're in a room. And it just is a very awkward experience that I think was, you know, you can see the reaction in the sister buildings where they, they all moved to change them years ago. Um, from that same feeling, which is just weird, um, and uncomfortable to be in. And so that was the impetus for asking uh, for this proposed change.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, the eighteen ninety-eight facade renovation drawings that you found, did you find any evidence that that work had ever been done?
Uh, these are actually stamped by the Department of Buildings. Um, so it wasn't just a drawing. It actually has the markings of the uh, application on them. Um, unfortunately, Department of Buildings, of course, uh, is not the greatest at maintaining files. This, this was found by, um, uh, our outside, yeah, the Office for Metropolitan History. Um, but it actually has those stamps on it, which was very uh, exciting to see. And you do see that if you go to actions, I think on the D O B website, you can see that this was in their uh, system enough to at least make it to their actions area. Uh, whoops here, let me.
But on the, in the building itself, is there any evidence of this work that had been done?
Uh, I think the, obviously the stoop was completely removed and the windows have been removed. Um, and the whole interior was renovated in the nineteen nineties. So it's, any historical features were completely removed at that point.
So none of this around, around the door, none of that trim work is there?
That was all removed before nineteen forty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Okay, other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And then we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance and get to others. And I'll turn it over to Gregory Collet to take us through the testimony.
Thank you so much, Chair Carroll. Uh, we have a few people signed up in advance. So are we going through those right now? The first of which is Anna Markham from Village Preservation. So Anna, I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Anna Markham and I am speaking on behalf of Village Preservation today. The rooftop addition and elimination of the attic sized windows proposed in this application are incredibly detrimental to the historic character of this Greek revival row house. The height of the attic story can be raised without destroying the original attic windows. According to the Greenwich Village Historic District Designation Report, twenty-five West twenty, excuse me, twenty-five West Tenth Street with its attic windows is the most intact of the four Greek revival, Greek revival houses in its row. To allow this to be erased now would run counter to the purp- to the purpose of landmark designation. The design enassing of the rooftop addition are not thoughtfully designed and detract from the overall architectural integrity of the home and the block. The rear facade is also victim to gratuitous glass washing and unnecessary expansion. Additionally, the proposed stained glass windows detract from the more reserved Greek revival style of the home and should be reconsidered. Overall, we urge the commission to deny this application in its entirety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Anna. And next we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from Historic Districts Council. So Lucy, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you could please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. H D C finds this application to be problematic and in need of further study. The proposed alterations to the front facade are inappropriate and should be rejected in full. In particular, the proposed modification to the front door infringement um, is arbitrary. They are previous, um, they were previously restored to a more appropriate Greek revival format. The proposed raising of the front cornice is unnecessary. It is also not possible to execute in a visually sufficient way. The applicant will not be able to match the original brick or the original mortar spacing. Therefore, the facade will read as damaged. If the applicant needs headroom, perhaps some sort of dormer could be deployed behind the current cornice. The lower three floors of the rear facade should be largely maintained as they are. This facade appears to be a well-composed neoclassical design and proposed alteration should work with that composition. The alterations to the upper two floors masonry openings are appropriate, but the actual windows seem to be mismatched. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for that, Lucy. And the next person on our list is Mark Bench from V S N Y. So Mark, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you could just state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Gregory, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Carroll, Commissioners. This is Mark Bench for the Victorian Society in New York. The applicant cites a variety of sources for the proposed redesign of the front facade. But choosing elements as if it were from an à la carte menu has given us a result that looks plausible, but isn't historically appropriate. We're especially opposed to the enlargement of the top floor windows. Buildings of this style and this building in particular have a progression, gradation of window sizes from the tallest at the parlor floor to the shortest at the attic or top floor. This basic organization of the street facade must be maintained. We don't object to the other facade changes, though we think it would be better if either the original design or the Hoppin and Coon design were replicated. However, we think the proposed colored glass in the transoms and front door isn't right. This kind of leaded glass pattern, we believe, typically employ uncolored clear or semi-transparent glass, not multi-colored glass. The Hoppin and Coon glass design, where it to be replicated, could plausibly include colored glass. We also think the proposed openings on the lower floors of the rear facade are hugely overscaled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mark, for that. So I believe that is it for hands raised and sign-ups in advance. So I will just note that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval of the modification of the front steps and entrance according to the historic records and restoration and modifications of the front facade, the rooftop additions with very modest visibility of one element, the demolition of the nonhistoric extension and near facade modification of the windows, and the excavation provided that the proper method of work and monitoring are carried out at a high standard and according to all applicable regulations. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Uh, sure, I'm happy to respond. Obviously, we were delighted to find that drawing from eighteen ninety-eight. Um, it seems looking at the neighborhood, looking at the sister building, that the idea of uh, leaded stained glass is a very common one in this neighborhood. Um, and personally, I find it very, you know, exciting to walk by and it gives life to these facades. Um, and so I think the fact that uh, it was in the original drawing and, and uh, there are numerous ones in the neighborhood, let alone the sister building, that have versions of uh, these uh, stained leaded glass uh, are there. Uh, was exciting for us to find. And I think, uh, you know, part of an interesting neighborhood, um, versus, uh, you know, something that uh, is just a uh, kind of a compilation of what someone imagines this building should have been. Um, with the top floor, obviously, uh, the twenty-nine West Tenth Street um, has this exact condition, um, and has been context, you know, in the context for ever. Um, you know, these uh, top floors obviously had some major issue of that everyone came to the same conclusion that it was awkward and needed to be changed in the sister buildings, um, which our client, uh, you know, realizing we, we have the same experience being up there. Um, and can be done very well without any uh, impact on the neighborhood, uh, keeping it in context. Um, and so we would hope the commission would um, you know, take that into consideration. Um, with the rooftop uh, bulkheads, uh, neither bulkhead would be visible from the street. Um, with the rear facade, of course, we're restoring those three windows on the top floor, um, giving back, uh, what was the original layout of those top uh, two floors. Um, and then the lower floor is sort of um, consistent with what, uh, the commission has allowed in the past, um, which is uh, what we're proposing here. Um, and so I think that would be all the comments I would have. Um, I don't know, uh, if Valerie, if you have any other comments. Um, but I think, um, that's, uh, I think I hit all the.
No, I think you, you covered it. Um, certainly the rear, um, alterations are very typical of, of what the commission has approved at the rear of other townhouses in this district.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, so we will start to unmute and move toward our discussion. All right, Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to clo- uh, close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll now begin our discussion. And so proposal includes work on the front facade, um, including changing the uh, windows and door transoms to uh, to match uh, details found in draw, historic drawings, to raise the uh, attic floor, uh, windows at the street wall and uh, then work at the rear facade, which also reflects raising the roof of the top floor so that the windows are taller and returning a tripartite configuration at those floors and a new fenestration pattern at the rear facade. And finally, um, excavation at the um, beneath the, the basement and cellar. So sort of three areas of work and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you start this one?
Uh, yes. Um, I, I find most of what, um, the applicant is proposing to be troublesome. Um, it is the last surviving original height Greek revival building of the row. Uh, and so, um, given that, I believe that it should remain that and the top windows should remain, uh, as the original windows were. The traditionally the attic windows were always a smaller size. Um, I think that's appropriate to the style of building and the age of building. Um, and I also, um, troubled by the applicant's desire to incorporate only some elements of the eighteen ninety-eight design that they found. Um, in that overall design for that project, for that, sorry, for that design. Um, the, the windows remain the same, hot, same sizes as the original. Um, and the top windows remain as, as casements. Um, and in fact, the parlor floor windows are also shown as double hungs and not casements. Um, the leaded glass that they're proposing is not, um, a replica, but sort of an inspiration taken from this, which I think, um, is sort of a, you know, mixing, mixing styles in a sort of a confusing way. It's not taking the original design, um, for the leaded glass over the parlor windows, but rather taking an element from the win, from the panel of the door to um, replicate something um, for the transom. So it's, it's, it's sort of a, um, uh, you know, a new design basically based on some historic, um, uh, precedents. So, um, I think that either they could faithfully reproduce the eighteen ninety-eight, uh, door, transom and windows or, um, come up with a, maybe a more simplified design, um, for the stained glass. Um, I think the, the railings are, are fine. Um, and for the rear, um, I think again that, that the original volume of the house should remain and the top floor should not be raised. Um, I have also, you know, this bit of a problem with the uh, effort to clean up the rear of these buildings. Um, but I know in the past we have approved returning these backs of houses to the tri- the tripartite window confi- configuration at the top. So I can't find it inappropriate. Um, I think the rear addition, um, is relatively appropriate, but I, you know, we normally ask for a heavier spandrel between floors at the back and not, um, a double height wall of glass. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Chapin.
Uh, I agree with many of Commissioner Holford Smith's comments. In particular, uh, I strongly feel that, uh, the up window should be preserved on the front facade. Uh, I actually, I think it would be okay to raise the roof line and there are a variety of ways, I think, to do that. Uh, using, you know, something like, you know, uh, as I said, uh, you know, a, a studio, uh, windows or, uh, something of skylights or something of that nature in the front and then working back to a, a higher, uh, ceiling. So I don't object to ra- raising the roof line, but I think you can do it without it being, uh, visible over the front facade and while still preserving, uh, the original cornice and the original, uh, front window so that you have that proportion on the front. Um, I agree with her remarks about the, uh, the lack of, you know, following, following, if you're going to follow the original or attempt to do so, that there sort of the picking and choosing hasn't worked out totally well and that that needs to be better done. Uh, either go, you know, really try to hew to it or, or come up with something very internally consistent. I'm not, I, the comment that was made, uh, during testimony about the colored windows, that struck me as well. And I I'm not an expert in this. Uh, I, I think, uh, an non-colored leaded, leaded glass would be more appropriate, but obviously the staff could uh, guide them on that, whether that's, uh, correct or not. And as far as the back's concerned, I generally think the back is okay. Uh, you know, I could support, uh, Commissioner Holford Smith's comments, but I think that, you know, the, the back is, uh, but I think that, you know, the the back is uh, I I could probably just approve that as presented unless uh others have serious problem with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Right, um, I think I'm with uh uh the 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 two commissioners to my virtual left. Um, um, I think that um the, our goal is always to try to preserve the volume of the existing building, even as it grows in in its modern iteration. So erasing it as this one proposes to do in the front, even though that was commonly done in the past, um, is something that we we generally do not approve of unless there are extenuating circumstances. And since, as um Diana has raised the option of the north light, which we've seen used successfully in other applications in the village, um, it's a much more appropriate way to gain the height that you need while maintaining the expression of the volume of the original house. Um, yeah, you know, fixing it quote unquote so that it aligns with its neighbors is not really something that would, it's kind of, it's not historical, it's it's aesthetic. Um, so uh i- it's true that the applicant said that, you know, being on the inside, you know, you have to crouch down or stand on your tippy toes to look out the windows and in the Diana proposal, but I think that that's an acceptable uh inconvenience, and certainly it's something that's not within our purview to 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 consider. Um, I think that the uh modifications to the gr- to the parlor level, uh, the architectural modifications as opposed to the leaded glass, I think you ha- if they can find evidence that that the work that was was proposed at the DOB was actually done in the field through observing the actual field conditions, then I could accept a restoration quote unquote of those features. If however, this was something that got a permit at the building department but was then never done, then I think again, for the reason of wanting to hold on to historic material as opposed to new material that looks old, I think we should try to keep what's there. I personally do not have a problem with the, let's say, let, uh, you know, more interpretive stained glass. Um, I think that it's it's a new feature, it's not opposed as a restoration, and I think it's okay because it adds texture and there is other leaded glass in the in that immediate area and uh one would understand the relationship. And it would kind of announce itself as modern, which I think is appropriate. I think in terms of the back, I agree with uh uh um Anne again on the height of the uh rear cornice, should stay where it was, uh, and you can modify above it. Um, but I I think that we want to keep the original expression of volume of the house intact and visible to uh people who live in 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 the doughnut and uh general, it's it's good principle. I personally have never felt strongly uh motivated to urge people to add that heavier transom bar over the first floor. I think it's a fig leaf, uh, but um, so I could accept, I could accept the rear yard addition as it is. I just find the the railing and very low parapet peculiar uh relationship and the the degree of masonry that's above that s- that lintel looks just clipped to me, but I don't think that is a factor of um appropriateness as much as aesthetics.
Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Thanks, Sarah. I don't have a lot to add to my uh, to my colleagues' comments. I I agree one hundred percent with what Commissioner Holford Smith has uh put forth.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, um, there's been a lot of comment made, so I will not add to the confusion, but I tend to agree with at least the stained pot glass with Commissioner uh Goldblum that it could be interpretive, and I also agree with that that top of the parapet uh uh, it seems to be flimsy, and I think that those are the two things that serve up for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Um, a- as Anne said, much is problematic, and for me too. But let me focus on just two specific ones. I don't disagree with almost all the others that people have said. But the uh the top attic windows, particularly in the front, unless I'm less obsessed by it in the back, but in the front really must be maintained. This is, this is a Greek revival house that still mostly, mostly uh exhibits its its characteristics, and I think it would be a shame to lose it uh to history. So I think that that just should not be changed. Um, there could be possibilities of uh of of raising the roof, I suppose, with uh with windows, uh, you know, artist windows uh so often seen even on this street. Um, and then there's something very peculiar to me about finding and and great discovery, we found this drawing, but we don't know if that the, any of the drawing was ever implemented. So it's kind of an interesting Victorian era series of changes, uh, you know, uh, tha- that layer of history was proposed, but I don't know that we know that it was ever actually put on the building. And then to put it on the building in in, uh, you know, in twenty twenty-two seems uh peculiar and extreme. So to me, that's an interesting drawing, but I would keep it and not let it touch the house in in reality. And um, I'm just not a huge fan also of stained glass on a Greek revival building. I'm not sure, again, I'm not a an expert on that either, but seems inappropriate. Um, so uh those are the things I would focus on.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letfy?
Um, I uh, I am definitely in accord with a lot of what Anne said. Ma- maintaining the roof line in the front, there could be an artist's studio window. Um, although ideally in the back, we would lose the top floor as well. Um, I, you know, I do think that ma- I'm just to continue on the back, I do think that mass of black uh of glass at the um, needs to be broken up, so whether it's through a s- a spandrel um, that is metal or brick, uh, I think it would be helpful in the front. I think the, to go back to the front, I think the the uh original, you know, windows should be maintained and the door surrounds, and I am not in favor of the uh multicolored leaded glass.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, I'm in agreement with all of Anne's comments.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, yeah, I me- me as well. Um, I would just highlight the uh the stained glass issue. Um, you know, the reason I don't agree with the concept that it could be interpretive is that it will actually, I might, to my mind, call undue attention to itself. Um, so otherwise, I'm in agreement with uh one of Anne's comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I also find that I'm in agreement with all of Commissioner Holford Smith's comments and uh concerns. And I just, um, I I mean, I just find it strange to uh call this upper floor au- you know, an awkward kind of experience. It is an attic configuration, so um, I I think it's it's attic awkward, and there are a lot of other top floors and lots of other buildings that don't have, you know, uh, uh, this particular vintage attic, and so uh thi- this is, this condition here is true to this, to the history of this building and uh very important, I think, to um, preserve.
Okay. Great. Thank you all for your comments. Okay, so I think where we are is we will not take an action today. We'll ask the applicants to consider all of the comments that we've heard. I think that the comments have largely been to maintain the facade and uh its details to the Greek revival period um on the front facade, maintain the original roof line and thinking about o- other ways to raise the ceiling height behind the uh cornice and parapets. And uh some commissioners have also uh asked asked for some more separate articulation or horizontal separation in the rear facade finestration. So we'll take no action. We'll ask the applicants to consider these comments, and uh when they're ready with a revised proposal, we'll have them back. All right, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Right, the next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC twenty-three dash zero three one five five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five eleven lot six, five eighty Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store and loft building designed by Buckman and Deisler and built in eighteen ninety-seven, and the application is to install a marquee and replace a door.
Hey, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Sharida, you now have control of the presentation. You can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Okay, uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Sharida Paulson of PKSB Architects, uh, representing the owners of five eighty Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Um, hmm, oh, there we go. The application is for two changes to the building. One is to replace the entry door assembly on Broadway. And the, on the opposite side of the building on Crosby Street, this is a through block building, to add a new marquee over um a new or a replacement of the service door entrance. And as I just said, this is a through block building. Um, it goes from Broadway to Crosby in this block between Prince and Houston. And it is one of the taller buildings in the district, and it is also one of a trio. Um, it is the southernmost building um shown here in the nineteen forty tax photo on the left and in the both sides of Broadway books circa nineteen ten. Um, the buildings are identical except for the placement of their entrance doors at grade, and five eighty is the southernmost of the trio. And as you can see in this um rendered elevation, this is five eighty. This is five eighty-four and five eighty-eight. For some reason, they got a centered door. Everybody else got side side placements. Um, and as as we were amused to note, the uh places where doors were located are completely black in this rendering, so we don't really have a historic model um to judge from. And this is the current street elevation, and what I'll note is that five eighty-eight, which is the northernmost, the middle building, five eighty-four, uh, came before the commission in twenty fourteen, and the um door replacements were approved at that time. Five eighty was owned by a different um entity and did not go through that application process. And what we are seeking to do is um match the doors as approved for five eighty-four and five eighty-eight. This um handsome wood infill is not original, um, and we don't believe that it's historic because in the photographs that we do have, there's um a different relationship of the top of the doorways to the transoms above. There are, but there always were two transoms. And this is the elevation drawing, which also indicates the deep recess on the Broadway side of the um transoms and doors. And the proposal is to match the approved um door design from five eighty-four and five eighty-eight. And um it's the same color, the same materials, the arched um window transom will be in the same proportions, and the proposal is to match the lettering for the numbers as well. Um, these are the detailed drawings of the metal infill. And this is a rendering illustrating the the triple, two of the triple. Now, on the Crosby side, um, the the building has not had as much love over the years as the Broadway side, but um we are fortunate just to note that the historic transoms, cast iron, upper um level windows and transoms over the service bay are all historic and are all being restored. The two photographs on the right are just evidence of the probes that we conducted to make sure that what's behind this panel was not there was no historic e- exterior material remaining, and in fact, there were some rather awkward and ungainly posts. And so what we are proposing on this side is to add a marquee over the new um entrance into the second, the Crosby side lobby. Um, this is a simple metal channel with tension rods tying back into the recess portion of the brick within the joints. And this is a two-part marquee in that it has metal frame and a glazed um or more translucent, transparent glass roof atop it to protect from the weather. And as precedent, what we're showing are some nearby, very nearby, half a block away, uh, one forty Crosby, which was recently approved, very similar, one hundred Crosby, and the Crosby Street Hotel, very similar in having the glazing over the metal. And on Mercer, there are a variety of slightly different types of marquees, but on these two streets. And what I'll note is that these, of course, are not on Broadway because the back streets, Crosby and Mercer, um, were the, essentially, the loading streets for the Broadway buildings when there were these through conditions. And s- and so the commission's approvals of marquees have largely been on those two streets. And these are the detailed drawings showing the um marquee in elevation, plan, and section. And I'll just note that the metal channel is nine inches high and the glass is raised up about two inches above. And it's broken up into four s- uh four panels. And there's additional, and I've lost my cursor. Uh, there we go. There's additional small light fixtures affixed to those channels that run front to back um that divide up the glass panels. And that's to provide a soft glow on the sidewalk. And this rendering illustrates what, what when we're all done, we should see, um, this is the restored storefront on the commercial side, and this is the former service bay with a new pair of doors, et cetera. These have all been approved at staff level because we are reclaiming, restoring, and repairing as much as we can, and the the marquee is meant to be um subtle. It provides some protection as these doors are much closer to the front of the building than the doors on the Broadway side. And I will just note that the lettering or uh the signage is limited to the address of the building, and it's on the sides so that you'll see it as you walk down the street. And that is it.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions, so let's see if we have public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We received a few signups beforehand, so I'll be going through those first. The first of which is Richard Moses. So, Richard, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, Commissioners. Richard Moses from Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, also known as Lesby. Uh, Lesby is not opposed to the referenced application to install a new aluminum entry door and marquee at five eighty Broadway, although with some minor qualifications. We believe that the highly commercial character of this historic district uh should allow for a more expansive interpretation of appropriateness concerning ground floor alterations than other historic districts that are less intensely commercial, providing the alterations are in keeping with the building's providing the alterations are in keeping with the building's architecture, are reversible, and do not damage significant architectural features. The proposed Broadway entry door is of a simplified design that recalls other doorways of this period, as well as at the neighboring sister buildings. However, we request that the LPC staff work with the applicant to ensure that the door's proposed dark bronze finish is appropriate, and that the door pulls are less visually intrusive and more in keeping with buildings of this age and type. We find that the marquee located at what we believe is the service facade of the building is in keeping with other marquees found at the service entrances of similar buildings within this historic district, and that its elegant linear design harmonizes with the building's classical revival architecture. You should have a hard copy of this testimony in your folder, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Richard. And next we will be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. So Lucy, I'm promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for public record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you Commissioners. Hello, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC is largely supportive of this application, but notes that the transom above the Crosby Street canopy is not fully resolved and should relate to the adjacent bay of the building. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Lucy. And, and next up, we'll have Jeremy Woodoff from VSNY. So Jeremy, I'm going to promote you to panelist right now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Jeremy, are you with us?
Yes, sorry, it took a while. I just need to pull up the testimony. Okay, thank you. Sorry for the delay. Good afternoon Commissioners, Jeremy Woodoff for the Victorian Society, New York. The Victorian Society supports the proposed glass and metal marquee on the Crosby Street facade, but finds the new doors proposed for Broadway to be inappropriate. The proposed pair of dark bronze-finished aluminum and glass doors, new transoms and new metal frame are based on the glass and aluminum doors at five eighty-four Broadway. This seems inappropriate in several ways. First, aluminum doors weren't available when five eighty was constructed, and the proposed proportions, details and finish are not in keeping with the historic style of this building and its elaborate masonry entrance base. Second, if iron and glass doors had been used, they'd have had a painted finish. And finally, although the western facade of five eighty Broadway appears to be one massive one hundred fifty foot wide building extending from five eighty to five ninety, this isn't actually the case. The designation report states it's actually three buildings which share a common facade. It seems much more appropriate to use the materials, proportions and painted finish which were available in eighteen ninety-seven at this building. The existing doors at five eighty-four, we believe, are inappropriate in design despite having been approved by the commission some years ago, according to the applicant. They should not be used as a model for new ones at five eighty. When a modern glass and aluminum doors at five eighty-four fail, they can then be replaced with appropriate doors using the new doors at five eighty as the prototype. And the applicants have actually included drawings for an appropriate pair of doors in their presentation. Board twelve shows the modestly scaled glass and metal Crosby Street canopy, which the VSNY supports. And right below the canopy is a well-proportioned pair of painted wood and glass doors which have been approved at staff level for this facade. Doors of these materials and similar detailing would be perfectly appropriate for the Broadway entrance. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Okay, so it appears as though that those are all the hands that were raised in the signups beforehand. So I will just note that Community Board Two of Manhattan recommends approval of the glass and metal Broadway entry and the security equipment, as well as the Crosby Street marquee, provided that the lighting is soft and of a warm appearance and of the security equipment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, would you, Sheridan, would you like to respond to the comments? I think we've heard a lot of supportive comments, but some comments about the doors and their finish and proportions, yeah.
Sure, and, and I would just like to respond first to the comment about the transoms on the Crosby Street side. Those are historic transoms, and they are a little weird in their proportions, but they're historic, so we're leaving them alone. And I appreciate all the supportive comments about the marquee, so I'll say thank you. On the Broadway side, I think that the, there are two issues related to this. One is that it is a triple group of buildings, and the approval of the door infill at five eighty-four and five eighty-eight was for exactly this, this door. And the goal of this application is to once again bring these three buildings into having a common expression at their entrances. Their storefronts are different across the, the band of all of these buildings, but they are all modern. And so the, the proliferation of the modern materials here does seem to speak to having the, the broader variety of streetscape, but something that is contextual across the three buildings and where the three buildings entrances can once again match.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, so I think we don't have questions, and we can move to our discussion. So if you can all unmute, that would be great. All right, Commissioner Lutfi, would you make the motion to close the hearing? And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. One is to replace nonhistoric doors with new metal doors that match commission-approved doors in matching buildings, and then to install a marquee on the Crosby Street side, which will happen in conjunction with the restoration of historic windows and doors and new infill that will be approved at staff level. Commissioner Gustafson, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, it's relatively straightforward. It's hard to ask an applicant to do anything more than match an existing commission-approved example that's right next door. So I think that is the, the door design is fine as far, and they've established as well that it apparently it is a thing on Crosby Street to have metal canopies and far be it for us to destroy that trend. So I, I think that's fine, and the design there is simple and straightforward as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I think that the, what they're proposing for, Richard is proposing for, the Crosby Street side makes sense. It conforms with the other canopies on the street and and I think makes it, you know, does not at all call attention to itself. It's thin enough, it's the signage of the address on the sides is entirely appropriate, so I think that's all good. With respect to the Broadway side, I understand the testimony and, and the concerns about the material and kind of the fact that they're a bit contemporary, but I think that the applicant's notions to, one, that the doors are contextual, two, that they match for the first time in a while are both convincing, and I think make the Broadway proposal appropriate as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I find this application to be appropriate. I think matching the existing metal and glass doors on Broadway. You know, it's appropriate, makes the entrances match, and I think the canopy on Crosby is, is well, well scaled to the entry.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. It gets appropriate as presented. I think I have nothing, another doubt.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Agree.
Commissioner Bland?
Well, first I want to say it's always nice to see the, the former chair back for a star turn, and in this case certainly a star turn. Good, good work. And even though it was pointed out that the commission-approved doors
Reminder.
might have been wrongly made it out whenever it was done. I think John Gustafson has, has said it right. We're not going to go against it now. At least I'm not going to. I think it's appropriate, and the canopy certainly is appropriate. They're all over Crosby and Mercer, so all together, a nice job.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I, I agree. This is appropriate.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree, appropriate and well done.
And Commissioner Jefferson? Whoops, I think Commissioner Jefferson, you were unmuted.
I, I just said one word, appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Gustafson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC twenty-three dash zero three one five five, five eighty Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, the application is to install a marquee and replace a door. I note that the building's style, scale, material and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the removal of the existing modern entrance infill at the Broadway building entrance will not eliminate significant historic fabric, that the materials and details of the infill featuring paired bronze and glass doors and arched transom will harmonize with the materials palette of the building and match the existing commission-approved doors at the two sister buildings, that the presence of a marquee on Crosby Street is in keeping with historic metal canopies found on the secondary facades of buildings which face Broadway, that the design and materials of the marquee featuring steel-framed glass, steel tiebacks, light fixtures and a security camera, camera will be harmonious with the industrial character of the building and be attached through areas of plain masonry, and that the work will not detract from significant features of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
All right. Sorry, I was, Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire? Commissioner Goldblum? Aye. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you Commissioners.
Right, the next item is public hearing item number eight, LPC twenty-three dash zero three two seven four. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block twelve seventy-four, lot seventy-five oh four. Seventy-seven sixty-eight Fifth Avenue, the Plaza Hotel individual and interior landmark. This is a French Renaissance-style hotel designed by Henry Janeway Hardenberg and built in nineteen oh five to oh seven, with an addition designed by Warren and Wettmore and built in nineteen twenty-one. And the application is to replace select terracotta units with substitute material.
Thanks Commissioners. The applicants have entered the hearing. Michael, if you'll just click on your screen, you'll have control of the presentation. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Michael Doyle of Atchison Doyle Partners. I'm here with Howard Zimmerman, who's the architect and engineer from, for the, the actual work on the building. Atchison Doyle is the preservation architect and consultant for a myriad of issues on the building. If I can just say, from the start, we were told to be ready at three o'clock and to hone this for five or 10 minutes and be very specific. The building is a luxury to be talking about, but we'll focus exactly on our application for alternate materials on the fifteenth floor balcony. Keep going. The, the, this is the terracotta balcony that protrudes five foot four inches off the building and has been in very difficult condition. The history of the block, I think we can go through this very quickly. We, we know that the building, it was designated in sixty-nine, right at the beginning of the whole landmarks momentum in the city. Their primary facades facing Central Park, South, Grand Army Plaza, which is Fifth Avenue and Fifty-Eighth Street. And they're all, it's a very evident facade with very imposing street views. The existing building conditions, we have no shortage of documentation of photographs, and we've been working, just as a quick aside, with Bernadette Artis, our firm, on issues from, that we've been in front of you on the penthouse and different facade issues. Howard Zimmerman's firm has been working since two thousand and twelve on the exterior fist reports, and we've been working very closely with staff who have been very helpful on every step, step of the way, so nothing is, is brand new or shocking in this presentation, I hope. Continue, please. Next. The facade, the area that's circled in blue, and I'll be very clear, we're talking about the balcony that's right above the lower blue dashed line. And that is really what we're limited to. There might be drawings that are slightly confusing about showing terracotta of being replaced above that with replacement material GFRC. It's really limited just to this balcony. I just want to be clear about that. Next. I'm going to start with some photographs of the existing conditions, but I would ask Howard Zimmerman, who will speak very eloquently about the details of this structurally. Howard, could you join us?
Thank you Mickey. Thank you Commissioners for your time. We're here to talk about, obviously, the Plaza Hotel and specifically the fifteenth floor balcony. This team, Howard Zimmerman Architects and Engineers, Atchison and Doyle Partners are the preservation consultants. JLL are the owner's reps, and the four condominiums compromising the Plaza Hotel. We are, this entire team is very well aware of our obligation and responsibility to maintain this jewel of a building in a proper manner befitting such a world-renowned landmark. Our entire team feels a moral and architectural responsibility to get this right. We're not here today to ask for permission to do less. We're not here today to get away with not doing something, and we're not here today to try to plead economic hardship to spend less money. We are here today solely to ask permission to go on a structural dive.
Expansion joints of the
We want to We want to put back everything that was removed in exactly the same detail it was originally created, but we want to do it with a quality material that is approximately twenty-five percent lighter. Water has been corroding the structural outriggers of this fifteenth floor balcony for the past fifty years or so. They extend outboard of the facade approximately five and a half feet and are structurally compromised from years of water infiltration and corrosion. Essentially, the outriggers can no longer do the work they were originally designed to do. That is to support the terracotta pieces that comprise the fifteenth floor balcony. As you can see on the right and on the left, you don't need it to be an architect or a structural engineer to see that structural steel that looks like the thickness of potato chips with whole or Swiss cheese just doesn't feel right to support something. So to beef these up or to strengthen them, these outriggers to their original strength and capacity would require us to dig deep into the building to get to the existing spandrel beam, which I will show you in a second, which by its very intrusive nature would cause which by its very intrusive nature would cause enormous damage to the interior side of this landmark, which is something everyone wants to avoid, including LPC, I believe, to avoid. So if we could, Mickey, if you could, who's controlling the cursor? So basically, we're looking at a cross section of the balcony. The red arrow represents the weight of the balcony enclosure. And basically, that's pushing down on these outriggers that are like Swiss cheese and potato chips. In order to, and that weight pushing down is causing kind of a dipping effect represented on the left side by that curving arrow. And what we are trying to do is right where that cursor is, avoid putting any pressure on the spandrel beam, which is embedded inside the interior. Just to give you a reference point, Mickey, could you move the cursor to where a person would be standing just to represent the inside of the building? If you were an occupant of the building, you would be standing there where the cursor is, looking to the right outboard to Central Park. So that's the, that's the glass, that's the inside. And basically, if you could picture the weight of the terracotta would be pressing down on this red arrow and trying to rotate the beam that's supporting it. And we have to avoid that at all costs because of the corroded outboard outriggers. So go on. Here we have, again, there is the original terracotta on the lower right hand corner. There, years ago, somebody put fiberglass, basically glued fiberglass to the outboard side of the ballast of the balcony to try to make it look good. On top of that, you can see cracks through the terracotta. And essentially, from a structural point of view, there is a through crack where the red arrow is that the left hand side of terracotta can literally just fall out because it's not anchored back because that crack in the middle of the horizontal is a through crack that is really basically destroying any structural integrity that this has. And this is just an accident waiting to happen. We subsequently, under building department permit, removed this, but we put netting up to catch any loose terracotta. Here are pieces of delaminating terracotta that were just indicative of the years of corrosion of the material. Again, the netting on the lower left hand side, you see spalling. Here again is the original terracotta with its glazed finish with through cracks on the round part, and you could actually see the lamination of the glazing of the terracotta. Years, we've been collecting all this glazing that was falling on the sidewalk shed at street level. Here's an inside shot of the terrible condition where we have fiberglass on the outboard side. And the reason we don't want to use fiberglass is it's a molded material that only gives you rounded corners and you lose all the clarity and accuracy of the original castings of the terracotta. There is somebody's signature there that says terracotta 1982, when somebody put back some terracotta and some fiberglass. This is an example of how not to do a repair on a internationally known landmark. And here is just the mess of years of patching and just doing poor jobs of mixing fiberglass with terracotta. And it really looks like a paper mache collage of inappropriate materials. We want to get rid of all of this and restore it to its original brander. So we have collected and saved all the existing terracotta pieces so we can replicate everything in kind for the balcony that we are asking to put back in GFRC. Next. So again, it is literally, for the purpose of this discussion, all we are asking for is permission to replace that 15th floor balcony with an identical replica of the detail of the terracotta except in GFRC. So if I could take you through this, the first column says terracotta. If you go to the second line, the most important part of this presentation, terracotta weighs 85 pounds per cubic foot. If we wanted to go to precast concrete, it would be 180 pounds. It's not an option because it's twice the weight. We can't support the 85 pounds of terracotta, let alone twice that amount in 100, of precast concrete. Microcotta would be a great substitute material. It's a newer material, grade four casting. We have found out literally in the last month that it's not available as a material because of supply chain reasons. So no distributor is able to get that material. So that leaves us with GFRC, which is 60 pounds per cubic foot as opposed to 85 pounds per cubic foot for terracotta. GFRC gives us the accuracy, clarity of terracotta. It is a high quality material that has been used for years. I think it came on the market in the 1970s. It's an accepted material, acceptable material, accepted by landmarks. Qualitatively, it gives us all the desired qualities aesthetically, and the durability is terrific and very important. The color stabilization is very good. And we find it architecturally and historically a very acceptable substitute material for terracotta. And again, the purpose here is not to overstress the existing outriggers, which would then cause weight conditions and torque on the spandrel beam, which would then require us to go into the interior space of this landmark building.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Howard. I just want to run through quickly the scope, the remaining scope and make it really clear. Once again, the area that we're talking about is the 15th floor and terracotta would be used for replacement above and below the 15th floor areas. Next. This is where that gets a little bit confusing. Those violent areas above the 15th floor are really more specific about the balconies which are being restored in total restoration in place and is a staff approval for the overall FISP report. And there is no terracotta being replaced above the 15th floor or below. Next. That's just, again, so that this doesn't leave you confused. Next. We don't have to go through this, but there, the interior and the west facing facades, keep going. The, it's an enormous project. It's very challenging to the four condominiums who make up the building. And it will hopefully be about a two to two and a half year program, which would start hopefully with your approval. The, the work is scheduled, phase two would begin. Phase one was the work that did the removals in the dangerous conditions. A new sidewalk bridge is being put up and the hope is to get this back in total public view and as quickly as possible. And again, I wanted to thank, this is a real staff and architect engineer joint venture. We've really been talking for the last couple of years. Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Devonshire, please go ahead.
Yeah. Can you explain what repairs or replacement are going to be taking place with the metal that supports the terracotta?
The outriggers will be scraped, painted. We're going to weld plates to the outside to where you saw the Swiss cheese quality of the beam. We're going to weld in place some support steel to restore some of the structural integrity required. But outboard of the building.
So if you're, if you are completing appropriate repairs to the steel, why do you need a lighter material to apply to it? I mean, it's, it's the failure, it's the failure of the system. Water gets into the system, the metal, the metal rusts and expands, and that's what blows the terracotta apart. It's not a terracotta problem. It's, it's a support and backup system problem. So why do we need a lighter cladding material if the repairs to the steel are adequate?
The repairs that we're making to the steel are to stiffen the actual steel members. The part of the building we can't get to is where the outriggers are connected to the spandrel beams that is inside the building. So the engineer's concern is that those connections over time have also weakened similar to how the steel has weakened. We've done a few probes into them. The connections are all riveted together and for us to redo those connections, we've got to open up a big area in the building so that we can get in there and deal with the rivets and then either bolt, drill and weld things together inside a building to make it work. The only way we could restore the structure of the balcony to the point where it could again support terracotta. The intention of the lighter weight material is to save the weight so we don't have to destroy more historic fabric by digging farther into the building.
You're on mute. You're on mute.
Muted, muted.
Oh, thank you. All right. I wasn't seeing any other questions. So we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to our executive director, Lisa Kersavage, to take us through the testimony.
Okay, thank you. We had one person sign up to speak, and that is the Historic District Council. Hey, Historic District Council, you're in the meeting?
Hello, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HGC finds the use of GFRC to be inappropriate in this application and would like to see the restoration work completed using terracotta. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we also received resolution from Community Board Five recommending conditional approval of the application with the condition that the applicant prioritizes use of GFRC with a glazed finish for a uniform look as the favored alternative material for terracotta.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant team and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments. I know that you have a larger plan, restoration plan here that involves replacing terracotta with new terracotta. And this is a discrete element, and you've explained why you're doing it. But there are some, I think, comments about finish as well that I think you could address.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Sorry. Just, I'm just asking if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Yes, Howard put it pretty well. From our point of view, the, looking at it very closely, there was substantial material above and below the 15th floor balcony, which would be seriously affected. Even the simple brick of the facade as well as the terracotta portions. And it just seemed hundreds upon hundreds of additional square feet of stable material that would have had to be removed. And given that this is usually a staff approval above the seventh floor, we thought that it could be considered, especially with the restorative aspects of the rest of the FISP work that Howard Zimmerman's office is proposing. It's totally restorative and not that it matters to the LPC, but the budget is in excess of $65 million. So this is not a light decision.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right. So we are getting ready, I think, to close a hearing and have our discussion. So if you can all start to unmute or accept my request to unmute. Right. And Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And what Michael Doyle just referred to was the staff level rules that allow the staff to approve alternate materials such as GFRC on discrete elements on upper floors of buildings within historic districts. And this is obviously an individual landmark, but I think he was making a comment that doing so here would be consistent with that approach that we've taken on other buildings. It is also part of a larger restoration plan that will involve replacement of terracotta elsewhere on the facade. And the applicant has explained their reasoning for the balcony, the choice of this material for the balcony at the 15th floor. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start this one?
Yeah. I realize that doing the steel repairs takes more effort and probably more budget than the applicant wishes to take. But I think that the underlying structural issues are things that need to be appropriately addressed. And in such a case, then the cladding material, which is terracotta, could be replaced in kind, which is typically what one would expect on a building of this historical importance. And so I cannot, in good conscience, vote to approve this application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
This is the part I would like to defer to the majority, even though I understand the history and the significance of this building. But I also know that the commission have typically approved this type of use in select location as well. So I'd like to hear what the rest of the commissioners like to say.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Interesting, interesting discussion here. But because of where it's located, way, way, way up on the building, I think I can accept it as long as that glaze issue, which was brought up by the community board, I think, in any event, that that issue is addressed so that the visual appearance of this material really does replicate the original terracotta.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letfy?
I mean, I concur with Commissioner Devonshire on this.
All right. Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm a bit confused because if you're, if you're repairing the steel and you're repairing completely, then the loading should be able to take terracotta. Are they saying that they're only, they're repairing only part of the steel? So therefore, the loading, the load that it can take is reduced? That's why we're going to this alternate material? So there, I'm confused.
Right. I think that inquiry can. Right, I think that, and Corey can step in, but I think that the extent of the steel repair work is somewhat limited because they are trying to preserve other pieces of terracotta intact, and I think the extent of work that would be required would they feel threaten other portions of the terracotta and require more replacement. Corey, did I get that right?
Uh, that's correct.
So, so the, this, the correction of the steel erosion is, is not a hundred percent corrected. It's only partially corrected because they can't get to the source. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what the applicant has stated, correct.
Right, so therefore, it's not, it cannot be fully loaded. That's what they're saying.
Okay, right, and the method that they're doing.
Is, is therefore, so in twenty years from now, eventually, they'll have to go back and repair that the connection of the steel at some point, because the erosion won't stop, it'll continue. Am I hearing that right? Am I right about that? Anybody can help you with that?
I, I think you'd have to open up the applicants again to address that. That's, that's a speculative question.
So I, I would go with Commissioner Devonshire.
Commissioner, uh, sorry, Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Devonshire.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Um, yes, you know, it, it is true that it's very high up in the building, as Commissioner Bland said, but this is one of the few buildings in the city. You know, where the public actually looks at the facade of the building, the facade of the building is the kind of the representation of its landmark quality and status and history and heritage. And I think that you're, that, that, yes, you're, from a distance, you might not really see the material change up at that floor, but one wants to think that the building will be sort of intact and its materiality will be true to, to that history that you're looking up at and and, and sort of celebrating and memorializing. So I think it's actually a case where the rule is, is, i- is not as that, is not as strong as the kind of the condition, which is that at this particular spot, we see it all and we want to see it all, and the public looks at it continuously. So I think it's really important for the material to be terracotta. And I'm in agreement with Commissioner Devonshire about, you know, requiring that the work to the support for that terracotta potentially be expanded in order to properly support it. And so i- in this case, I can't approve what's being proposed.
Okay, thank you. Right, Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, am I correct, Sarah, that we have previously approved architectural fiberglass very high up a couple floors above this area?
Yes, that's my understanding, is that we have previously approved GFRC in other discrete locations on these facades.
As, as shown in, I think, slide twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Uh, it's, it's a very difficult question, because it is a beautiful building and, you know, obviously we, everyone would, I think, want to see it restored, ideally with terracotta. The issue of damaging additional historic material while trying to replace it, uh, you know, replace the rest of the steel also is important. Uh, and we didn't really get from them, I guess, the issue is to whether, if the steel got the steel does not get replaced at this time, and it has the load of the GFRC, will there, in fact, as, as Commissioner Jefferson wondered, have to be another replacement in the same area? Uh, and if so, at what point? So we don't have information on that. But I, in this case, I'm also concerned about, you know, getting the repairs done in timely fashion, having the material available. If you went to alter, it would take, I think, additional time, which has some issues too. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning to Commissioner Bland's position, although I feel, uh, you know, I'd love to see the terracotta as well, because I think we have previously approved something very similar, uh, just a couple floors higher than this. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Um, I tell you, having just come from, uh, uh, Nine Orchard last week, uh, which was all in splendiferous GFRC, I'm, I'm less, uh, and I think the reason to go for terracotta here is because of the support of the technology more than the aesthetics. Um, I think that, I mean, and it's certainly the aesthetics are something we could judge by samples. I, I, I kind of think I'm in Fred's camp. I, 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 I think that I could accept it out of GFRC.
And, you know, I, I concur as well. I think this is a very discreet element. We have done it before on this building and an approval would be consistent with that on this particular building, as well as, as you pointed out, some of the other individual landmarks that we just recently saw on our site visit at, when we went to Nine Orchard, and we also looked over at the forward building as well. So we, you know, we have certainly approved a number of, in those cases, a significant amount of fabric in replacement material, specifically GFRC. And so I think, you know, I would be supportive as well, but we don't have enough of us to vote on that today, so I think we will, the majority of the commissioners right now are not comfortable with it, and maybe we will take no action. And maybe we can, if the applicants want to come back again, they can always do it in terracotta, but if they want to come back again, they can give us some more information on the longevity and of doing a partial steel structural repair and answer some of those other questions that some of the commissioners had who were thinking about they're both thinking about the two different options. Okay, so we'll take no action today, and we'll move to the next item.
Okay, the next item is public hearing item number nine, LPC twenty-two dash one-one-five-eight-four. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block thirteen eighty, lot thirty-nine, six-thirty Park Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance style apartment, apartment building designed by JER Carpenter and built in nineteen sixteen, and the application is to construct a rear addition.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing, and the staff will be taking you through the presentation. Janelle, you may begin whenever you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Janelle Gunther, Preservation Staff. Um, the item before you is six-thirty Park Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. It is located on the west side of the avenue at the corner of East Sixty-sixth Street. I'll be walking you through the details of the proposal, which is to construct a rear yard addition. Here's an aerial view of the subject property indicating the location of the proposed addition. There is a break in the street wall along East Sixty-sixth Street at a service corridor where the addition will be visible from public thoroughfare. It will be visible through the ironwork and also when the gates are open. The next few slides show the location of the proposed addition at the first floor of the rear facade. Um, here is a rendering of the proposed addition and its fenestration. And also a rendering of the addition as viewed through the service corridor. Here is a plan drawing of the proposed addition as well as some existing and proposed elevations of the west-facing facade, north-facing facade, and the south-facing facade, the appropriateness of their proposal, and answer any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions, so why don't we move to public testimony? If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Lisa Chris Savage to take us to the testimony.
Okay, we had two people sign up for this item. We'll start with Friends of the Upper East Side.
Good afternoon, Rachel Levy. We're Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends, Preservation Committee does not object to this modest extension of the first floor of this large apartment building. We appreciate that its tan brick cladding will match the utilitarian nature of the bare facade, although visible through the alleyway gate on East Sixty-sixth Street, the addition does not call undue attention to itself. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and next we have Historic District Council.
Hello, my name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HGC generally supports this proposal because it is largely invisible from the street, but we find the addition's lack of facade articulation and detailing to be in need of further study and refinement. Perhaps the addition of a parapet above the second floor windows would improve the appearance of this facade. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised, but I will note that we've received a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Eight recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'd like to now ask if the applicant would like to respond to the comments from the Historic District Council or add anything else that hasn't been stated yet?
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Levon Chegian. I'm one of the applicants. On this, I would just say, uh, there was a comment about adding a parapet wall, but we tried to keep the height reduced as much as possible to ensure least amount of visibility from the neighboring building. Other than that, I don't have any further comments. That's just question.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, so I think we can move to our discussion. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussions. This is fairly straightforward application for this addition that has some minimal visibility through a service alley. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
I think this is very modest, not visible enough to warrant our, our attention or others, and I think is
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, it's modest and approvable.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed.
Commissioner Devonshire?
I think Adi put it perfectly, uh, approvable.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Agree with Adi as well.
Okay, great. Commissioner Bland?
Certainly has my attention. I'm approving it.
Okay, Commissioner Lutfi?
Approvable.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Approvable.
All right, and Commissioner Gustafson?
Wow, this is the opposite of overreaching. I, I approve.
Okay, so we have a consensus. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make the motion?
Yes, in the matter of LPC two-two-one-one-five-eight-four, six-thirty Park Avenue, Upper East Side Historic District, a neo-Renaissance style apartment building designed by JER Carpenter and built in nineteen sixteen, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note the building's style, scale, materials and details of the building are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not conceal or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the addition will only be visible from East Sixty-sixth Street through a service corridor within the context of secondary facades, that the proposed addition will be modest in scale and will not overwhelm the building, that the plain brick cladding and simple punched openings will harmonize with the materials and fenestration pattern of the rest of the building, thereby helping it to remain a discreet presence, and that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With ten in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. We'll move to the next and final item.
Yes, public hearing item number ten, LPC twenty-three dash zero-two-one-five-two. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block twenty-one forty-five, lot one. Forty-one forty Broadway, the United Palace, formerly Lowe's One Seventy-Fifth Street Theater Individual Landmark. An Indo-Persian-style theater building designed by Thomas W. Lamb and built in nineteen twenty-nine to thirty. The application is to install LED signage.
Hey, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing, and the staff will be taking you through the presentation. You say your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leanne Pollock, Preservation Staff. This item is forty-one forty Broadway. The owner is proposing to install six video screens within the existing poster boxes at the Broadway facade and the south facade. The building was originally a movie theater and vaudeville house that was purchased in nineteen sixty-nine by United Palace of Spiritual Arts, and it's used as a spiritual center, theater for live events and movies, community space and filming. The United Palace is a full-block building located in Washington Heights as seen outlined in red on this aerial photo. The owner is seeking approval for video screens at six of the twenty existing poster boxes located on various facades of the theater. There are many examples of commission-approved LED and video signage at theaters. Here are photos of a few examples, including at Rockefeller Center here, the Apollo Theater, and a few of the Broadway Theaters. The commission has also approved numerous LED directory signs at religious properties, such as the examples shown on this slide. There are twenty total poster boxes and display cases located throughout every facade of the building. Here are a few photos showing those current conditions. They're used for a variety of purposes, from showcasing local art to advertising events. The six subject boxes are concentrated adjacent to the main entrance in the vicinity of the existing illuminated marquee and Broadway commercial corridor. There would be no change to the outer frames of the boxes or to the size of the openings of the existing boxes. You can see the details of the frames here, and note that they are currently internally illuminated, and so the existing conduit penetrations would be reused for the LED screens. One box on Broadway will feature information about the nonprofit that rents the second floor of the building. One box on Broadway and the two boxes at the open space will display a rotating selection of upcoming and past events. The boxes to either side of the main entrance of the building will feature static display screens with information about the history, programming and contact information for the United Palace. Thank you very much, and the owner's representative, Mike Fiddleston, would like to say a few words and is also available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Owner, please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for considering the United Palace's proposal. We would very much like to continue maintaining our efforts to, to be a historic theater. We're ninety-two years old this year. But keep one foot in the past and put one foot in the contemporary times with digital signage. So it's easier to get our message across. It's cheaper than printing signage that has a very short shelf life and that we need to put up and bring down. When we work with promoters and outsiders, they have a hard time getting the dimensions just right for the prints that go in. Um, and we can just do it on the fly and just be a little bit more creative and welcoming to anyone who's interested in being a part of the United Palace family. Um, as Leanne, and, and who I will hire to do my next presentation, she does it so well. Um, two of the boxes will be devoted to United Palace um, events, activities. Um, those are the ones on the screen that are second from the left and second to the right. Those are the ones on the screen that are second from the left and second to the right. The two boxes on the screen that look black with white lettering are just holding patterns for static display boxes that will have the history of the United Palace. The one on the left will be in English, the one on the right will be in Spanish because a predominance of local residents speak Spanish in a very Dominican community. And that box on the far right that's white with a sort of a logo in the middle of, I'm sorry, the far left is the North Manhattan Arts Alliance, right next to the door that accesses the second floor where their studios are, that they provide for community use, that will provide signage for their events and activities and messaging. The box on the far right that's the deepest into the plaza will be more for community messaging, upcoming activities at the community board, other local arts organizations, but really using that as a sort of a visual calendar for the community and helping bring in the activity of the plaza, just giving that a little bit more focus. We tend to have kind of a Wild West aspect about our Plaza de las Americas. And we find that this might be a way of helping direct the attention and direct the activities that are happening there in a more cohesive manner. Thank you for considering this. Happy to entertain any questions.
Right, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at this time. So let's see if we have anyone here to testify on this item. If you're in the meeting, I would like to speak on this application. Please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Lisa Chris Savage to take us through the testimony.
Okay, great. As always, we'll start with those who signed up in advance, and we have one person who signed up, which is Jeremy Woodoff. Jeremy. Jeremy, I see you've unmuted yourself.
Yes, I'm just trying to start my video. There we go. Good afternoon again Commissioners, I'm Jeremy Woodoff speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. We typically testify against installation of L E D signs as we find they are inappropriate to most dignified buildings and historic district contexts. The United Palace, however, is something else. While it isn't Victorian in date, its over-the-top exuberance, grand scale and exotic revival architecture reflect similar aspects of Victorian era design. Built as one of the Lowe's Wonder Theaters, the whole point of its design inside and out is to dazzle the eye, something that L E D signs are made to do. It's really the nature of the building, along with its continued use for performances and films, that allows these signs to be appropriate. In this case, rather than detracting from the building's character, the signs will add to that character. Therefore, we support this proposal to allow L E D signs in six of the existing ground floor boxes, along with the refurbishment of those boxes. We hope we do not see this installation appearing in a precedence line for proposed L E D installations on other kinds of buildings where they aren't appropriate. The Victorian Society expresses its appreciation to the owners and managers of the United Palace for their stewardship of this glorious building, including their efforts at diverse programming to encourage a broad range of the public to experience the building. We especially note the ongoing restoration of the important and rare Morton Wonder Theater organ. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, I'll call Kenny Rodriguez. I'm going to bring you in as a panelist. And Kenny, I see you've come in. You can turn on your video if you like. You go and please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. This is Kenny Rodriguez from Boletos Express, business pointer with United Palace for about fifteen years now. And really excited to, you know, just just bring to the table that it's pretty much time for an update on a more professional presentation. I deal with fans and customers, and so is my team for years at the box office. And I think the main common question that we get walk-ups is asking what are the upcoming events? So it'll be really nice to be able to put out a public message on these screens for people to see the upcoming events. I would also help with the challenges of promoters trying to get printed materials on those boards and somewhat fight for who show is on those boards and create an automatic rotation. But I think the presentation going from manual to digital would really be something much appreciated by the community.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Sergio Martinez. If you could please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Yes, Sergio Martinez representing Zemora Entertainment. We host three to six shows throughout the year at the iconic United Palace and we fully support the conversion of the digital boxes. As a promoter of events, digital signage has created, reaching our customers more easier, and having these screens be able to display our events will definitely cut costs while reaching more potential customers. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, next, we call John Alman. Okay, John Alman, come in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, hi. Could you state your name for the record?
Absolutely, I'm John Alman. I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce of Washington Heights in Inwood. And as we work with numerous arts and cultural businesses and institutions in the neighborhood, we see this as a terrific opportunity to reach and connect with new audiences, old audiences alike. The United Palace has always been a sort of town hall village green and not just for locals a lot, but for people who come up here for various events and attractions. This is just another terrific and creative way to reach these audiences and draw them in. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then I see Nerea Vivia Gutierrez. I hope I've pronounced that correctly.
Hi.
Hi, please just state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Nerea Leva Gutierrez, and I am the Executive Director of the Northern Manhattan Arts Alliance, also known as NOMA. We currently occupy the second floor of the United Palace where we have our office and for studio spaces that we make available to artists and arts organizations. We are also the custodians of the first floor accessible gallery that we have worked in partnership with the United Palace. Actually, they've worked with us to provide where we have programming and exhibitions that are free and open to the public. Our job is to engage directly with the community, to offer programming, arts programming, technical assistance workshops. Signage like this, a digital sign, would allow us to fulfill our mission to directly engage with our community beyond those that are currently in our network who have access to our webpage or may have access to our newsletter. This will really allow those who are walking by traffic to really be a part of our programming and the exhibitions that we create to serve our community. This is a forward-looking, I think timely, important change to the facade. We are excited about it. It will be located, our box will be located right at our entrance. So it'll be really nice. We're in a palace, but we are a nonprofit organization housed in the palace. So it would be wonderful for us to also have that clear indication that we are in the building and we are here to serve our community. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Okay, and I don't see any other hands raised, but I would like to note that we received a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Twelve recommending approval of the application.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the testimony was all supportive. So I'd like to just turn back to the applicant and ask if there is any final comment you'd like to make before we begin our discussion.
Well, the applicant is very much thankful for all the support and comments. And to Jeremy, the Victorian Society, I'm going to tell you in advance, I'm probably stealing your line over-the-top exuberance to describe our architecture. That's a good one, man. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, if there are no final questions, if you can start to unmute yourself, we will begin our discussion. And Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
A motion.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion on this very beautiful landmark that is very exuberant in its architecture and it's a very large landmark, a full block. The proposal is to modify six of their street level signs at focusing around the entry and the marquee with new L E D signs that would help to promote the multiple uses that they provide to the community here. So we will go ahead and have that discussion. Commissioner Lutti, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I think it's fairly straightforward. This is a beautiful building. And they are going to be reusing existing signage and they're going to be re-outfitting it. And there's very vibrant programming going on here, and it doesn't seem like it's, you know, we're very careful about over-signing facilities, but it doesn't seem like that's what's going to happen here. So I can approve this.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I, I can approve this.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, agreed. This is appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I think it's appropriate and does not detract from the building, which, as you say, is really robust and has so much going on that I think this actually is complimentary.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree. This is, you know, appropriate, and I think this kind of signage is a good direction for certain kinds of venues. And we've been approving it in other places. I think it's totally suitable here.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed, appropriate.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Perfectly appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Agree with all the Commissioners.
And Vice Chair Bland?
It's appropriate here. It's also appropriate in the places much more sensitive perhaps than this architectural. Partly because we, I think, always require it to be within the confines of an existing marquee already. So, and this is doing the same thing. So, great, great, great work here.
Great, that's terrific. All right, so I think we have a consensus. Commissioner Lutti, would you make the motion?
Sure. In the matter of docket twenty-three zero-two-one-five-two, forty-one forty Broadway, United Palace, or formerly Lowe's One Hundred Seventy-Fifth Street Theater, an individual landmark, an Indo Persian style theater designed by Thomas W Lamb and built in nineteen twenty-nine, nineteen thirty. The application is to install the signage. I recommend approval finding that existing poster boxes will be retrofitted and reused. Therefore, the work will not eliminate any significant architectural features or add additional clutter to the facades. That the presence of signs of this scale with both static and changing information is in keeping with traditional signage typically found at theater buildings. That the signs feature L E D technology containing programmable informational content. A modern version of traditional directories associated with religious buildings and poster boxes typically found at theater buildings. That the L E D signs are concentrated under illuminated marquees at the main building entrance, fronting on the commercial thoroughfare Broadway and at the south facade, fronting on an open public park space. Therefore, the new building is consistent with existing lighting and signage, and the additional illumination will not overwhelm the building and that the work will not detract from nor diminish the special architectural character of this individual landmark.
Great, thank you. Right, and Commissioner Bland, would you second this motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you very much. And that concludes our day today for November first. So thank you all. Thanks to everyone who participated. And as always, thank you Commissioners for your hard work.